May we have roll call?
Councilmember Zaga-Janian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here, may we have your report?
Agenda for the May 21st, 2019 special public meeting of the city council is postponed on Thursday, May 16th, 2019 on the Bolton Board outside city. For you, Mr. Mayor and council is the Director of Community Development regarding update on shared mobility pilot program issuance of requests for proposals for shared mobility pilot program. One A is a resolution authorizing the issuance of RFPs. Two is the Director of Community Development regarding public hearing on design review board, DRB case number PDR 1900364 located at 275 West Lexington Drive to install a proposed mural on one of the onsite buildings. Two A is a motion to approve the DRB application with conditions. That is all for this agenda, this special meeting.
Okay, let's go to, for item number one, let's go to Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in December of 2018, the council requested staff to return with draft regulations on a pilot program. This afternoon, staff is here to provide you with information. And Assistant Community Development Director, Mr. Calvert, will take you through the PowerPoint presentation.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. As mentioned, we are returning following the December meeting. The, back of that December meeting, we were asked to bring information on dock and dockless mobility systems, recognizing that they were starting to become more prominent in regions around us. We knew that was starting to creep into Glendale. We've seen devices here, interest in other modes of transportation. So we had presented the different alternatives that related to dock and dockless systems. From there, as mentioned, we were asked to develop draft regulations and standards for a pilot program. And this afternoon, we would like to go through essentially what the overview of that pilot program would look like, some of those key regulations, how we would report on this program, if council wished to move forward with it. And then we were also requested to bring back some information regarding safety and usage of the devices as well. So just a little bit of surrounding context, the city of Los Angeles currently is permitting 3,000 scooter devices per company within their city limits. Pasadena is also considering regulations for a bike share system. They actually reached out to us at a certain point a few months ago to better understand what we were considering for regulations as they developed theirs. Burbank is also considering their own regulations. And just recently, unincorporated Los Angeles County released an RFP for a pilot program as well. A bit more context, there's currently a bill, AB 1112, that is being considered. This would prevent cities from essentially establishing regulations that are any more restrictive than how you would essentially regulate a personally owned scooter or personally owned bike, or as we are defining as mobility share. So that is something the staff is keeping an eye on, how that might impact what we're presenting here today and any future programs as well. So the pilot program, we'd like to discuss the timeline, some of the key regulations, and then how we would report this to council if they decided to move forward. The timeline is essentially broken into two segments. What we're considering this kickoff stage, June, July, and August, this is where we would introduce a couple ordinances of things that would need to change, those would come back at a later meeting, not for this afternoon. We would release an RFP. As part of that RFP, we would select up to two vendors to participate in the program. We'll go over the study area and the end of devices shortly. There would be an engagement period incorporated as part of this. As part of the RFP process, we would be asking these vendors to participate in an engagement program so that we can teach riders the rules of the road essentially, best practices, and to inform the public of the program itself. And then that would ultimately lead to the program launch, and we wouldn't see that happening likely before any time in August or September, as we were to spend this time gearing up and selecting the right vendors. During that 12-month program, we have a number of check-in points we would propose with council. There would be a 90-day reporting period. This pilot program would be able to be terminated at any point in time. We are not necessarily on the hook for the full 12 months. If we find that this is something that's just not befitting of Glendale, that's not operating the way we expect it to, we would be able to terminate. So we would recommend coming back at 90 days, reporting to council, and getting council's feedback on the program as well. At the midpoint of the 12-month pilot program, we would release a public survey. And this would be in the same spirit as what many other cities have done, Denver, Portland, a couple others, to find out what the local perception has been with the public, including non-users, how the devices have been used, and how that system could potentially be recalibrated based on that feedback. And then ultimately, we would produce a summary report just before this 12-month pilot program would end, reporting out safety information and overall usage and the results of the survey. And that would be in advance of whether or not we would like to turn that 12-month program into something that is more permanent for the city. So, part of your council report, there exhibit number one showed the study area. This is essentially confined to a little bit north of 134, down to Atwater Village in Los Angeles, to the west, San Fernando, to the east, Chevy Chase. As we discussed in the December meeting, we did not see it advantageous to deploy these devices in less dense urban areas. So you see this primarily around downtown multifamily areas. There is a small hole in that donut. Americana currently does not allow devices inside their area, so we did essentially zone that out as part of this service area. We did consider other areas of the city, including Montrose, Glendale Community College, and up towards the Disney campus. There are some issues in terms of the speed limit of the streets that would not allow scooters to go up there. And then other areas expressed interest, but they wanted to see how a pilot program in the downtown vicinity would operate first before committing to participating in it. Overall, we're limiting the device total to 1,000. We had originally entertained a larger number, but as stated, we have reduced the overall consideration of that service area. We would require a minimum of 250 bicycles between those two vendors, a total of 250 bicycles to be distributed, so it would not be all scooters as part of this program. We would ask for the ability to scale this up or down based on the usage. If we find that the usage is not quite meeting expectations, that we could bring down the total number of devices. If we do find the program successful and they've met a minimum threshold that we defined as part of the regulations, that we could incrementally scale this up if the vendors came to us and asked.
Mr. Ega-Janian?
Minimum of 250 bicycles, for how long?
That would be part of the 12-month pilot program. So it would be 750 scooters and 250 bicycles, or more bicycles. But no more than 750 scooters is part of the program. Some of the regulations being considered, or are part of that draft standard and regulations that you have attached, as I said, a 12-month program with the option to terminate at any point in time, the operating hours would go from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Any of these regulations that we discuss here, or you've reviewed in your packet, if you have comments and would like to consider some changes, these are still draft, so we can make changes to these. There would be a public engagement and safety education campaign. We are aware that many of the vendors often distribute either materials on safety or helmets themselves, so we would be requesting that as part of the RFP and any vendor that participate in this. We would be looking for data collection as well, so we can better understand how these devices would be used, what are popular areas within the city that are being visited, where should we invest some of our time and efforts into pedestrian or cyclist infrastructure. And then we also have an insurance and indemnity clause in here, which would protect us. Essentially, we're asking for $10 million on insurance. As previously discussed, and the city attorney's office could highlight this more if need be, most cities are somewhere between 1 and 3, Santa Monica is all the way up to 5. We are going higher than other cities. Some of the rules of the road, the users must be 18 years old to use these. Many of the vendors, if not all, already require this anyways. No riding on the sidewalks would be allowed. Scooters can only be used on roads where the speed limit is below 35 miles an hour, or if it's above, it could be used in a bicycle lane. That was part of our challenge of trying to connect to Glendale Community College, is that we actually do not have bicycle lanes that lead up there, so scooters would not be allowed on those streets up to Glendale Community College. Helmets are not required, though, and that is a state law. We will, we would be encouraging vendors to distribute those as part of this.
Can you repeat that?
Can you repeat that?
Which portion?
For the helmets?
The helmets are not required by state law, but we would be asking that as part of the vendor participation, as part of their safety and public engagement, to distribute helmets.
But how are you going to enforce it? Because if the state law...
We can't enforce it. It's something that we would just encourage, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ega-Janian?
Just, I can't remember how they check that the person has, let's say, what do you call, not driver's license, but license to operate the scooter? Because for the vehicle, when you rent a car, so you present your driver's license or other information which they ask for the scooter...
So with the scooters...
I can give somebody else's license. How this works?
The applications do require you to scan your driver's license in order to start an account. That is not 100% fail-safe proof, obviously, but they do have that mechanism in there that they do require you to scan your driver's license at the start of your account so that you can prove that you're of age and have a driver's license.
So newcomer cannot come right away and say, "I want to rent a scooter"?
No, they would have to sign up via the application, and there are other mechanisms that they can do it as well, through the website. There's other initiatives they have to help reach lower-income communities that may not have access to smartphones. But when you start your account with the application, before you could ever rent a scooter, you have to scan your driver's license as part of that and submit that to them.
But Bradley, isn't that for identification purposes? Or that's for licensing?
It's also to prove that you're of age, of 18 years old, the minimum age.
I mean, if you had an ID card, an official California ID card, I think that's...
We'd have to check on that one, yeah.
Then it's linked to your credit card, your source of payment, and I think that's used to confirm.
Correct.
So I don't, as far as I know, and I might be wrong, maybe there's representatives out there, you don't need to be a licensed class three driver to rent one of these.
Not necessarily, not unless we set that up. Actually, Santa Monica does require that. They do require you to have a driver's license to rent a scooter as part of their program. So that could be something in our regulations that we would require someone to have a driver's license in order to use these.
Yes, Mr. Ega-Janian.
I mean, that's...
Mr. Garpetian?
Thank you. Even the regular motorcycle scooters, the ones that you can ride on the streets, and they're registered and licensed, you don't have to have a motorcycle license, or even driver's license, to ride these, if they don't go over 40 or 50 miles an hour. You don't have to, you can't ride them on the, if you're not able to ride them on the freeway, you don't have to have any license to ride the scooters that are much faster, and they're on the streets, they're larger, and, you know, the regular scooters, like the Vespa's or what have you. How are you going to regulate this? I mean, isn't there a problem that those scooters, you don't need anything, and for these, we're going to ask for them to have a driver's license to ride those scooters? These scooters, the electric ones?
It's something that we could ask for, we can't.
Oh, you can't, okay, you can't enforce it.
We can make that as part of our regulations. There's not a lot we could necessarily do to enforce it, but it's conveying the image that we would like older licensed users on these.
Okay, thank you. I thought we were regulating it, so it's part of our, okay, thank you.
So for parking, we have some pretty exhaustive requirements in there. One of the key ones is that we would require any distribution of these devices or parking to be a minimum of 15 feet away from any intersection. And that's to make sure that we are not blocking any ADA ramps. We also have requirements where these devices have to be at least 48 inches parked away from parking meters, transit infrastructure. We don't want these to be in the way of the things that people use every day on the street. We are also asking as part of the RFP process that any vendor demonstrate either an incentive or a penalty system for good or bad behavior. We covered this in December, but essentially, the way some of those work is that either they can issue a fine through the application for someone who does not park properly, who doesn't use the device properly, or they could reward them. In some cities, if you park these devices into designated parking areas up to 10 times and you've demonstrated that, they'll reward that rider with a free ride. This is something that we're asking the vendors to essentially demonstrate to us as part of the RFP process. During that review, we would select which ones we feel would best fit the city of Glendale, best fit the priorities of Glendale. When it comes to things such as fines, excuse me, through our discussions with many of the vendors, that's something that we're allowed to calibrate with them. So if we find that a $2 fine for parking in an area that we don't want them parked in is not quite working, we can raise that and elevate that. So we do have the ability to control and influence those penalties and those incentives. And overall, we would be looking at parking hubs, at least in the high-density areas such as downtown. And those parking hubs usually come by way of some sort of vinyl application, a box created on the sidewalk, or somewhere in a parking area where those devices are encouraged to be returned. And again, that ties back to that incentive or penalty system. Some vendors use virtual parking hubs. Again, this is one of those things that we'll be asking for as part of the RFP. How would they propose to create parking hubs? And then for us to be able to select that vendor that best meets those needs, best satisfies those concerns that we may have. Geo-fencing is something that will be used to control that service area, and in some cases, even parking. A couple examples I've thrown in here are some screenshots, actually, in Atlanta, so that you can see kind of that granularity that we can go down to in terms of geo-fencing. So that image on the left is one particular vendor, and you can see they have certain neighborhoods, certain parks that are geo-fenced out. The image to the right, they've actually geo-fenced out the Capitol Building, they've geo-fenced out the park, the primary park of the city, again, college campuses, and even in some cases, certain routes that are designated for recreation, such as running or cycling, they actually did not want to see scooters on there. So if council has feedback on that service area, we could modify that, and we could ask for that as part of the RFP and produce essentially a map such as this that would show areas where we would not want to see these devices within that larger area. What that geo-fencing ultimately does would allow, and from what we've gathered from our discussions with the vendors, and this can be done in multiple ways, but if a device essentially leaves the service area, once that, they can't necessarily just stop that device there. That would cause someone to have an accident. But it would disable that device the moment they've ended their ride. So no one else could come and essentially pick that up in an area we didn't want it used in, and then within anywhere from 1 to 4 hours, depending on the vendor, they would have to come and pick up that scooter. That's also a regulation that we've asked for, is the response time to clean up devices that are in areas that we do not want to see them in. We are currently asking for 2 hours to come pick that up. Some cities have up to 24. We wanted to see that removed much quicker. So the program reporting, as mentioned, we would want to return to council after 90 days. As we had mentioned, we, you know, the opportunity to end this program if need be, if it's not performing the way we would expect it to be, but as part of that report, we would like to provide ridership numbers to council, the trends, where are people using these, where are they going, how are they using them? Safety and incident reporting, and we'll have a few examples of that in just a moment. And then the ability, if we need to scale these devices up or down, if they're proving to not be as popular as we anticipated, or if they prove to be more popular than anticipated. And we would also like to present a draft of the public survey at this meeting. This is a great opportunity. As mentioned, cities such as Portland and Denver have used this as an opportunity to really understand how people are using these devices, those that are non-users, their primary concerns, and also where are things such as injuries occurring, and how are they occurring, and why? And as mentioned, we would use that public survey during that pilot program if there were times that we needed to make adjustments, if there were improvements for this, to improve that experience for users or non-users during that period. And that would be included as part of our program summary report. The example that you see up there is something that Portland had produced, again, that really showed where are those opportunities, where the strengths of the program were, where the weaknesses were, how they could improve it if they wished to move on to a permanent program. And we feel that this report would help council make that decision if they chose to do that after the 12 months. This would require some ordinances as part of this. We're not doing that today, but we did want to bring attention to council what those ordinance would be. The first would be to authorize the shared mobility program. This would be governed by those standards and regulations, the draft version that you have attached to your report. It would also limit the number of operators to 2 during the pilot program. This is to make sure that additional vendors did not start dropping devices within the city limits, understanding that we wanted to maintain the number and maintain the number of vendors so that we could manage this properly, especially in the early stages. It would also require a second ordinance. Currently, Chapter 10 of the Glendale Municipal Code states that no person shall operate or use a skating or coasting device while upon any public roadway, alley, or sidewalk within the business district. And what we would propose to change that to would be to limit that to the streets where bicycle facilities, or where state law, or state speed limit laws allow those devices to be used. So that would be the second ordinance that would need to be introduced as part of this as well. But again, this afternoon.
Can you repeat that one more time?
The first or second, or would you like all of the ordinances?
No, the very last one, you said, in the business district, the skateboarding and everything else is not allowed.
Currently, yes. Human or wind-propelled devices, that was actually covered as part of the municipal code, are not allowed on the streets of downtown Glendale, the business district, if you will.
So you cannot ride your skateboard in downtown today?
Correct.
So by amending this, are you allowing the skateboarders to ride in downtown as well?
We would only modify it just for this program, just for the scooters. And we would put those limitations on it that, again, they need to be on the streets where the speed limit allows that, or where we have the infrastructure for it, such as bike lanes.
What do you mean by speed limit allowing it?
As mentioned earlier, scooters are not allowed on roads that are above 35 miles an hour without bicycle lanes, separate bicycle lanes.
So this one modified that, will modify that as well?
No, that would still hold that requirement in place. It would just be allowing the scooters on any street where essentially they're eligible to be operated, where the speed limit is below, or where that infrastructure is already in place.
Okay, so 35 miles an hour and below?
Correct.
If there's no bike lane, they can operate?
Correct.
If it's 35 miles plus, there has to be a bike lane in order for them to operate?
Yes, they have to have a dedicated bike lane, not just sharers in that case.
Right, right, thank you.
So some of the user behavior and safety, there were some questions that came up in the last council session, we've heard some public comments, and we want to be able to put some of this information out there on how people are using these, what are the dangers? We have seen many of the reports that have come out, people have been getting hurt. The first thing we'd like to look at is, if you recall this slide from our December presentation, this was essentially the usage of shared mobility devices at the end of 2017, which did not include scooters. Scooters really didn't come out onto the scene until about September of 2017, and that was really just in Santa Monica at the time. So there were 35 million trips taken on shared bicycles across the country in 2017. New data was just released and showed that 84 million trips in 2018, excuse me, between bicycles and scooters were taken nationwide, and 38 and a half million of those were scooters. So this does continue to grow, and it grew much faster once scooters entered the market in the most recent years. So the usage has definitely been there. Some of the user behavior, we've heard comments, and we see it in reports as well, that these may just be recreational devices, these are just things that people want to use to just ride around the city with no real intent or purpose to it. Denver, Colorado, one of the cities that we looked at, and the reasons why we looked at some of these cities is that they ended up doing much more exhaustive surveys than others. It was actually pretty challenging to find cities that were dig deep enough to want to understand how these devices were used, but both Denver and Portland did. And what Denver looked at was, what they asked was, "How did you use these devices to get around?" And what they found is that 43% of them were using them to either get to work or for work-related meetings, 38% were using them for shopping, dining, entertainment, 9% were for transit, or access to transit, and then 7% were for recreation, and 3% were to get to school. So in the case of Denver, the use for recreation was much lower than expected. Portland could not say necessarily the same thing, though it still didn't make up a majority. 29% of users stated they used it for recreation purposes, 71% were seeking to get to a specific destination. Portland asked this question a little bit differently than Denver did, and they just asked if they were trying to reach a certain destination. But within that, 35% were using it for shopping, dining, entertainment, 24% for work or work-related meetings, another 6% to access transit. Trip replacement has also been a big discussion as part of shared mobility, and this is bicycles and scooters. It's part of that last report, we had found that in Washington DC, where they had put bike-share services, they actually saw a reduction in congestion by up to 2%. We wanted to look a little bit more and see if maybe scooters also had a similar impact. And what Portland and Denver found from their surveys, about 1/3 of all users would have used an automobile in some fashion or another to make their trip, whether that was an Uber, a Lyft, a personal car, or a taxi. That percentage actually increased in the case of Portland, 48%, if they were a tourist. Ultimately, what that did is it replaced in Portland during a five-month pilot program or study, actually, the program was 12 months, but the five-month period, it was over 301,000 miles of vehicle miles traveled were replaced. And in the case of Denver, it was 313,000, almost 314,000. So projected out over a year, it was well over a million miles between these two cities that were replaced just by the scooters. Portland also has a bicycle share system in their city as well. In Sacramento, last October, new study came out, jump, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So would you go back again to...
I can't see that very well.
So 301,000 miles replaced in Portland, oh, so it's 34% of miles has been driven there?
The 34% of users reported that they would have used some form of an automobile instead of taking the scooter trip.
I know, but in Portland, how many miles people were driving that 301,000 is, now it's replaced with scooters? If it's 34% of all rides, I can understand. Is that right? Do you know what I'm asking?
So the 301 and the 313 are not actually tied to the 34 and 33% necessarily. Ultimately, about a million miles were traveled in both cities during this study period, and 1/3 of those miles were replaced by using scooters. So their estimates were that 301 and 313,000 miles of vehicle travel were taken off the roads during that period of time. And that was for the, I believe it was, Portland was a five-month period, and Denver was a six-month period.
And do we have, do we have a number as to what the total traveled miles in Portland is between the cars and Uber and Lyft and everything else?
We don't, you can pull state data.
I mean, this 300,000 mile, 301,000 mile is what percentage of the total miles traveled?
And that would be a little more difficult to estimate. That's something we could look at, though, and we did look at it as part of safety data. We actually did pull that for California, so that we could understand collision and injury data. We did not pull that for this, but we could.
But you have a report here that you're trying to base our decision on, but how come we don't have that one? How come we don't have that report part of this? Because when you have a number here, we have to see what is that number represents, what's the percentage of the total travel, miles traveled versus what we have here based on the scooters, miles traveled, basically. I mean, that would be a good comparison as to...
And one of the reasons why we didn't pull that data is that vehicle miles traveled by a city or a particular state will likely not include Uber or Lyft. It also will not include all modes of transportation. It won't include bicycle trips, whether that's miles or number of trips. So to be able to compare and to essentially estimate the total percentage that would be removed from the roads by all modes that are not vehicles would require data that essentially is just not produced, or is not estimated accurately enough as some of the others.
So what this report is telling me is 34% in Portland, instead of taking Lyft or Uber, they took scooters?
34% of those that used the scooters, yes, were replacing what otherwise would have been a trip via some form of automobile.
Okay, let's move on, thank you.
As I was stating, in Sacramento, Jump Electric Bicycles, that's actually owned by the same company as Uber, they recently saw the use of the e-bikes pass that of the actual Uber application, so that was another opportunity where they were able to take some vehicle miles traveled off the roads as the bicycles increased in popularity. And that's one of the reasons why we really want to see that as part of this pilot program as well, not just a single device, but we want to see those bicycles as part of it. Safety, injury studies have been done recently in Los Angeles via UCLA. Austin, Texas partnered with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to do what may be the most comprehensive study that we've seen thus far. And then Portland, Oregon also included it as part of their survey, they surveyed local hospitals. Most injuries came from those not using helmets. Over 50% had had injuries and they were not using helmets. Again, but that is something that we can't control, state law does not require it, but we would do whatever we could to encourage the use of those and the distribution of helmets. In the case of the study in Austin, Texas with the CDC, 33% of the injuries were from first-time riders, so that came from those essentially lacking experience. What they found in Austin, the CDC, is that for every 100,000 trips, there were 20 injuries. So there is risk associated with this, and no one would like to dispute that. And that's why we think that safety, education, and engagement element of this would be essential and key, and why we would be asking so much from our participating vendors. Putting a little bit of that in perspective, in Santa Monica, as part of that UCLA study, they saw almost 250 trips to the hospital during this period of time, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was 12 months, of those riding scooters during that same period. During that same period, there were almost 200 bicycle injuries, that was just separate from scooters. So it's not that disproportionate between scooters and those who are just riding their own bicycles. In Portland, Oregon, they saw just under 200 for scooter injuries, and over 450, or almost 450 for bicyclists. And the reason why that's important is that when we're considering this, we're not Santa Monica, we're not a tourist town, if you will, which does cause a different set of behavior. And that's why we wanted to look at a broader spectrum of cities and see what those injury rates were like. And Denver had something very similar to Portland here, again, those are the cities that did the most exhaustive in terms of survey or research. But they did find that either the scooters, the scooters and the bikes were either on par with one another in terms of injury rates, or in some cases, such as Portland, standard bicycles actually had higher rates of injury. So we went and looked at additional information, we took that CDC information from the study of the 20,000 inju-
Excuse me, can you go back to the last chart? I'm sorry. Again, this comparison is, you have to say how many people they were riding a bicycle versus scooter riders. You can't compare them unless you tell me how many peoples were, 1 million people were riding bicycles, or 20,000 riding scooters, how you compare this if you don't say?
That's actually what the next slide is for, this was just kind of high-level data that we considered, hospital reports, if you will. It's not always comparable, because you can't, or we're not, no one really is tracking the number of bicycle trips, being that that's a personal, unlicensed, unregistered mode of transportation, there's really no way to be able to compare that. So what we wanted to do was look at the relationship to automobile. And if you look at the CDC study with Austin, Texas, there were 20 injuries per 100,000 miles traveled, is what we ultimately gathered, because the average scooter trip is one mile. So 100,000 trips, there were 20 injuries in there, we can project that out, 200 injuries per 1 million miles traveled. We also pulled that information for the state of California for automobiles. And per 1 million miles traveled, there are 760 traffic injuries, and there are almost 1,400 traffic collisions that occur. And this really is about the only way that we can pull an apples-to-apples comparison, because we don't have those numbers for trips or miles for a personal bicycle rider. So our best way was to do this on a per-million miles trip, and we were able to do that with automobile compared to scooter. Otherwise, we have to use the data from the hospitals that was pulled, and that's what you saw from Santa Monica and from Portland in that prior slide. That's about the best apples-to-apples comparison we can make. So one closing point here is that we actually became the first city in the country where an electric bicycle-share system was established within a commercial office property. 655 North Central just released this recently, they have a bicycle-share system, electric one in their building. So we believe that does indicate that there is an interest for the shared mobility devices, that there is an interest to use something other than an automobile, whether that be a bicycle, an electric bicycle, or a scooter. One benefit we saw here, and we've seen some interest from potential downtown applicants as well, this was actually something we included as part of the DSP to incorporate an in-house shared mobility in certain developments as well. But we saw this as a good sign that there is some demand for some of these devices, and especially if we regulate this properly.
Mr. Ryan?
So the 65, 655 North Central, they have just, they have the bikes there?
Correct.
And did you get any information, data from them on how often they're used, or are they used, or?
Not yet, they just launched, so we actually have reached out, we'd like to talk to them more, to find out how they're going to track that information, and to also see if that's something that may be viable in other locations as well. We've reached out, but we haven't heard back yet.
Thank you.
So ultimately, the three alternatives that are presented, direct staff to issue the RFP and provide any additional direction regarding the ordinances or the regulations, decline to authorize the RFP and provide direction on establishing prohibitions on shared mobility devices, or any other alternatives that the council wishes to pursue.
Thank you for your report. Do we have any cards to speak on this item?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members and staff, Tony Passarella. A few points here, you guys have seen all the things I've presented over the last 12 or 13 weeks, so I won't... Okay, number one, I don't see a need, I don't see a need, we got the B-line, we got automobiles, could you hold off on that? We got bicycles, motorcycles, walking, we got Uber and Lyft share. So number one, I just don't see the need for such a device. And they're not green, I didn't see the gentleman say anything about, but the scooter companies are presenting these as green, they're not really green when you dig deep, when you consider manufacturing, delivery, and then pickup and redistribution when charging, and then if they're replacing walking or bike riding, well, they're not green at all. Now, the scooter, we talked about this, malfunctions in the scooters over and over again, I showed you pictures of wobbly stems, of wheels falling off, of baseboards breaking. So the vendor, we need to, the vendor has to make a better scooter. I mean, the scooters that are out there now are just a complete liability and a hazard, they're just not working. And I showed you the picture of the severe injuries, the head injuries, the fractures of the legs and the arms, people just don't know how to ride these things. So that's a big, big problem, I mean, really serious injuries. There's no, and there's no place to ride them. Okay, if it's illegal to ride them on the sidewalk, then they're illegal to ride on the sidewalk. Number two, you can't allow, you know, you can't allow these on the streets, because the streets are full of potholes and fissures this wide ravaged by the rains. You can't ride them in the hills, you need an ambulance at the base of the hill, because they're not made to stop going downhill, and they can't get up the hill, so I don't know where you're going to ride these things. What else do I got? Time is running out. You know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna say yes to this, I'm thinking you're putting profits before people. I mean, safety is the main issue here. You know, the gentleman, you know, talked about how dangerous they are. It's your moral obligation, council members, mayor, to keep us safe. Safety is number one over anything, right? I'd like to see either one or two outcomes, completely ban them, and go for the bikes, why not just go for the bikes? Or number two, wait a year, let's see what happens in these other cities with their regulations and how it all pans out. Bring it back any year, and be the, you know, the transcenter in terms of doing it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Catherine Lehrer. Catherine, I apologize, I was in my zone when I walked out, and I didn't, I didn't realize it was you, so...
No worries.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. Thanks for having me here today. I am an attorney in Santa Monica. As you know, scooters first dropped in Santa Monica about two years ago, so we're very familiar with the issues and the dangers that they presented to our community. And as an attorney in Santa Monica, I've spoken to well over 300 injury victims, both riders and pedestrians. I'm not going to tell you to ban scooters, although that's what I think you should do, because I think they're very dangerous for the community. But if you're going to allow them, I want to give you some suggestions that I think would be helpful and protect your community. I also would encourage you, you just mentioned, Mr. Calvert just mentioned AB 1286, it was passed out of the Assembly yesterday and moves on to the Senate. I would encourage you to table this vote until after that is signed into law, because once it becomes a law, it will protect riders who are injured when the scooters malfunction. Right now, if a scooter malfunctions, if the brakes fail, if the throttle sticks, if the handlebars come off, the scooter rider has waived any right to sue for injuries because of that user agreement. Once 1286 becomes a law, it prohibits the scooter companies from requiring riders to waive their rights. So that's very important for riders, because the majority of the calls that I get are from riders who are injured when the scooter malfunctions. And then I wanted to clarify two things, state law does require that scooter riders have driver's licenses. And I also wanted to clarify that state law says, I think you mentioned, Mr. Calvert, 35 miles an hour? I think the code section says that if a roadway has a speed limit in excess of 25 miles an hour, scooters cannot legally be ridden on that roadway unless there is a bike lane. And that's very important, because what I see in Santa Monica and Los Angeles is that the scooter companies are allowing their scooters to be parked on Pico Boulevard, Santa Monica Boulevard, Wilshire Boulevard, Lincoln Boulevard, all where there's no bike lanes, speed limit over 25 miles an hour. And so they're in effect encouraging riders to ride on streets where it's illegal to ride them, the riders don't know this, and so you're putting riders right next to very fast-moving vehicles, which is very dangerous. I have such little time, I'm going to give you my top few recommendations if you do approve the scooters. Number one, helmets. You just heard about the study, 40 to 48% of injured riders who are brought into emergency rooms suffer head injuries, often very severe head injuries. California law only requires minors to wear helmets, but it's silent as to adults. Nothing prohibits a city from requiring helmets. You can require the scooter companies to require helmets, and I would really, really encourage you, please do that if you're going to allow scooters in Glendale, because it's the number-one injury that my law firm is seeing, and we're just seeing some horrible lifelong injuries, head injuries, that these riders are suffering. Second thing I would suggest, if you're going to allow scooters, prohibit nighttime riding. I think the proposal said 11 o'clock, turn them off. I would encourage after sundown, turn them off after sundown. The reason being, the injuries that we're seeing at night are riders who are drunk, who are getting on these scooters, and you're going to have more drunk riders at night. Second thing you're going to see is, at night, riders cannot see the roadway imperfections ahead of them, so they can't see the cracks, they can't see the potholes, and therefore, if you turn them off after sundown, you're going to avoid those accidents. Secondly, I would also, if you're going to allow them, there's got to be a big effort to enforce the laws. You have to ticket those sidewalk riders, you have to ticket, people are not going to follow the law if they're not ticketing. Ticket the tandem riders, ticket the minors, allocate additional resources to cover the expense of those police officers who are going to give out those tickets, pass that cost on to the scooter companies. It's super important to put an emphasis-
Your time is up, but if you could give, I think it's up.
Yeah, it is up. Okay, I just want to say-
But if you could give us your, I do want to hear your-
I have so many, and I would love to share it with you guys, because I've become a de facto expert, I never wanted to be an expert in these injuries.
Just go through them real quick?
Sure.
In 30 seconds or so.
Emphasis on educating riders, riders don't know the law. Scooter companies don't do a good enough job of teaching people about the riders about the law. There's a little sticker that says, "Don't ride on the sidewalk," it's not enough, that's all people know, if they know that. They don't know that it's illegal to ride a scooter across a crosswalk, people do it all the time, it's illegal. Those riders are getting hit by right-turning cars, it's super dangerous. People don't know that you can't turn left at an intersection like a car. The law actually says you have to get off your scooter, walk it across the street. People don't know this. People don't know that scooter riders by law are required to use hand-turn signals. Nobody tells them, scooter companies don't tell them, the cities aren't getting the word out. Super important that if you're going to allow scooters, get the word out to the riders about the laws that apply to them. And I'm just going to give you, I have so many, and I'm happy to meet with you guys and give you suggestions if you want them later, but the other one that's super important, pedestrians. We get calls from so many pedestrians who are injured by these scooters. Two things, one is require the scooter companies to have a clearly visible, unique identification number on these scooters that is legible from at least 20 feet away, because that's a big problem. The scooter rider hits somebody and takes off, and there's no recourse, the scooter companies are refusing to take responsibility for those injuries. And the last one I'm going to add is, require the scooter companies, if a pedestrian is injured by a hit-and-run rider, right now the scooter companies are refusing to disclose the identity of those riders. Require the scooter companies to provide the injury victim with that information, as long as the rider provides the date, the time, and the location of the accident, because right now, the scooter companies aren't paying for those injuries, the injury victim has no recourse, because they don't know who it is who caused the injury. And the scooter companies are saying, "Sue us if you want that information." Most attorneys aren't going to take these cases, so you're leaving these injury victims with no recourse. And I'm going to leave it at that, and I'm happy to give you more recommendations if you guys would like them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carla Owonwane, I am LIME's Community Affairs Manager. Anybody not familiar with LIME, we currently operate in 100-plus cities across 20 countries. We just recently hit 50 million rides last month. Wanted to start off by thanking Mayor Najarian and council today for allowing me to speak today. We're encouraged by the city's willingness to discuss creating a sustainable, accessible, and affordable shared active transportation program. We believe that the scooters will help Glendale reduce vehicle miles traveled in the city, connect to transit in a way that increases cost recovery for these subsidized systems, and increase local spending. While we appreciate the work of city staff to bring a proposal forward, I'm here today to express some concern over three elements of the current draft, insurance, fees, and identification. The city's proposed insurance coverage would make it the second highest in the country in markets we currently serve, of which there are 60-plus in the US. We respectfully recommend that council direct staff to work with operators on commercial general liability requirements more in line with industry standards, such as the City of Los Angeles CGL requirements of 1 million per occurrence, and excess policy of 4 million on fees. We respectfully recommend that council direct staff to convert the proposed $1 per vehicle per day to per-trip fee of 15 cents per ride. This will provide cost recovery for the city's oversight of the program, and is more reflective of the dynamic utilization of the public right-of-way as vehicles go between city boundaries. Lastly, we recommend that council direct staff to work with operators on identification language that covers the risks associated with operators' business conduct while excluding loss or damage arising out of the city's negligence. These three elements of concern are outlined in a letter that we have already shared with council, city manager, and the city attorney, and we're happy to provide additional comments as necessary. We remain proud of the impact in communities around the globe, and look forward to developing and maintaining a meaningful partnership with the City of Glendale. One last thing for clarification, LIME, as well as the majority of our other operators, always fully participate and cooperate with law enforcement. The only thing we require is that they service with a warrant, and we have always worked with law enforcement, we do not refuse to cooperate. So just wanted to clarify that. Again, I want to thank council for your time and for allowing LIME to be a part of this public decision-making process. Thank you.
Is that as in a search warrant, where they need to go to a judge and get the signature and all that stuff, or?
Right, just for privacy concerns, obviously, all this data sharing, we need to be able to have a search warrant before we're able to disclose people's personal information. But we are always happy and have been working, and we've responded to everything that law enforcement has provided us in the City of LA.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, greetings, Mayor and council, my name is Morgan Roth with Bird's Government Partnerships Team here in Los Angeles County. We appreciate the council staff, the council and staff's commitment to bringing forward a shared mobility pilot program for Glendale. We know that our riders who use Bird elsewhere in the region are eager to see our service in their hometown. Bird is very interested in partnering with Glendale in advancing its goals around car trip reduction, easing traffic congestion, and reducing emissions. However, I'm here to raise concerns about the proposed, the proposed dockless pilot program, and note that we see an opportunity in providing some of the requirements in a way that all stakeholders could benefit from. The current proposal to charge operators high-vehicle fees may cause operators to choose not to operate here in the city, potentially undermining the overall viability of the program. The proposed revenue-sharing fees are cost prohibitive upfront, and would come at the expense of providing a favorable mode of transportation. Our recommendation to council is to charge the revenue-sharing structure from $1 a device per day to a per-ride fee of 15 cents per ride. This would in turn gross more revenue over time and would scale based on use. Another concern of ours is the high insurance provision built into the program, one of the highest we've ever seen. Our hope is that council will recognize that this structure will drive companies away from operating in the city. We ask that Glendale take the same approach that Los Angeles, Santa Monica, Long Beach, and other cities in the region have taken on insurance that works both for the city and the operator. Bird is interested in bringing our unmatched experience and high standards on safety and sustainability to Glendale's shared mobility pilot program. We hope you will create a favorable environment that encourages micro-mobility's long-term success in supporting the city's mobility- success in supporting the city's mobility and transit goals. Thank you very much for bringing this pilot program forward, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you. The last card I have is from Jonathan Deby.
Esteemed council members, mayor, council member Vartan Gartabian. There's been a lot said about how to enforce the issues and problems that we want to overcome. There's been a lot said today about the due diligence that was done on the research, partly from Portland and other cities, but I fear that maybe there wasn't enough research done on the technology that's out there, other technology that's available. We talk about geofencing as if it's a general thing and not a precise thing that we can do on sidewalks, keeping them, keeping scooters in the bike lane at a certain speed. So that's the underlying premise of Clever Mobility. We're more of a technology company than a scooter company. We are fighting an uphill battle with the other scooter companies, but we have the technology to really make a smart city efficient and safe. So while the creation of regulatory framework is important, the results of deployment with general rules have shown that simply requesting that operators encourage their users to comply with that, with the said rules, is inefficient and creates a burden on the cities. We are advocating that operators use technology to make regulatory compliance proactive rather than a public enforcement issue. Specifically, we recommend that Glendale consider a similar approach recently adopted by cities like San Jose and San Diego, which requires operators, as of July 1, 2019, to be able to control vehicle behavior and speeds over the network, effectively limiting top speeds or entirely disabling services on sidewalks or other restricted areas accurately, managing designated parking zones, and more. Moreover, turn signals, having that as standard on your scooter, having a scooter that's safe, that has large wheels, a three-wheel scooter. Our scooter will stand up to all the safety regulations that you put out there, guaranteed. We come a completely different approach. We don't buy Chinese-grade scooters. We build American scooters that are very strong and very powerful to, and very safe. User behavior is notoriously difficult to manage, let alone control effectively. Yet that has been the only approach used to date. The technology to control vehicle behavior in real time is currently available and should be mandated, so that cities aren't forced to adapt to less-than-ideal circumstances while also incurring the additional management, staffing, and enforcement burdens. We want the City of Glendale and its legislators to be aware that they can hold dockless mobility operators to a higher, smarter, and safer standard than to which they currently hold themselves. Respectfully yours, Clever Mobility. Thank you.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You make, you're a manufacturer of scooters?
Correct. We manufacture our own scooters, and we have...
Do you operate them as well?
Yes.
Or do you sell them to...
No, we operate, I mean, we also offer them as, if you have certain people in the city that want to use us as a white label, we're open to that as well, as long as they stand, they hold to the right standards.
And technology exists to require them to be in roadways rather than sidewalks?
100%. Wherever you want them to be parked, they don't have to be parked exactly there. Our battery, we don't, we don't require people to come at the end of the day to pick up the scooters and go recharge them. There's no logistic issues. You have replaceable batteries, and encourage young students or whoever to come and replace a battery, put in a fresh battery, and get credit, free rides, certain peak hours, off-peak hours. It's a three-wheeled scooter. It's safer, it's bigger. The geofencing is impeccable. You know, we talk about geofencing, it's just, it's macro, 5,000 feet, certain areas of the city that don't want it. It, it's, it can be as precise as you want it nowadays. The technology is just simply there, and that's, that's the beauty of where we're coming from, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Calvert?
Yes. I'm sorry, you, you mentioned my name, but I, I don't know which company are you with?
Clever Mobility.
Clever, clever mobility?
Yes, sir.
And where are you located at?
We're in, in Los Angeles, downtown Los Angeles. We're going to be in Chicago, operating Chicago, Portland, PBOT. We're in touch with them right now, and a few other cities that we're currently moving forward with, just the regulatory issues because of it being an uphill battle. You know, the last two years have seen an industry that exploded overnight, but the technology is there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any other cards. Let me first ask, the reference to AB 1112, it's out of Assembly, and the reason I ask is because if that passes, it will dictate, and perhaps usurp a lot of the authority that we're seeking to exert on these scooters. So does someone know where that is, and when will it pass, if at all?
I can't speak as to the status of it, and I, it doesn't necessarily prohibit regulation. What it does prohibit is a local agency from adopting any unduly restrictive requirements. So probably would, would be problematic to impose a ban legally if that becomes the law, but other than that, it's not clear what, what types of regulations, as long as it's not deemed to be unduly restrictive. One example being anything that's deemed to be cost prohibitive. I imagine, the way it's written, there's going to be a lot of litigation arising from that in the future, but that's, that's kind of the, the scope of the regulation.
So remember when we had the ADU discussion, the state law was going to be implemented, and we had to scramble to apply our own regulations, and if not, if state law, if we did not have one in place by the time state law came, then we were stuck with the default. Is that what we're looking at here? Would we be able, if we did nothing and said, "Let's wait and see if this bill passes," would we be stuck with the state law, or would we still be able to go back and add our requirements of whatever it is, the helmets, the parking, the speed, the identification, the insurance? Does AB 1112 address the insurance issue?
It's silent now, and earlier draft addressed insurance issues, but that's been removed as far as the latest, the latest drafting of that bill. It's, it, the language in there regarding local authorities is very limited. It just says that the cities cannot adopt unduly restrictive requirements, including anything that requires them to operate at a loss. Other than that, we, it's, it's a little bit different than the ADU situation, because you remember it with ADUs, we, Glendale was one of the only jurisdictions in the state that didn't allow them at all. And so that's why, that's why we were sort of behind the eight ball in that. This is a little bit different. We're in the same ballpark with all the other cities that are trying to deal with this. And so we can, we will continue to monitor that as it comes down.
And the marijuana, too. Remember Prop 64 was coming in, we had to pass our ban. If not, then it would have been legalized. So the reason I, the reason I asked us to come forward several months ago is because I thought it was inevitable, as these micro-mobility devices proliferated throughout the county, that we would soon be seeing them dumped at our door, dumped for, for lack of any better word, on our streets and our doorsteps for the use of our residents. And I thought it would be best if we got ahead of the curve and passed and adopted some regulations that were reasonable, especially in terms of a pilot program, to test out what our thoughts are to make them safe, reliable, convenient to, to our residents. So that's, was the genesis of bringing this forward. This was not brought by any of the operators or opponents of these to, to deal with. It was my attempt to try and be proactive in dealing with this and setting forth some guidelines. So, that being said, what do my colleagues think about this? Well, let me tell you what I think about it. I think, I think that micro-mobility is an important part of our transportation system, and it is growing every day. Metro is dealing with this, and Metro is developing regulations for these docking or parking areas near their transit hubs. They realize that it's going to be something that will be very helpful for the first mile and last mile for a certain type of, for a certain type of transit user. And it may be someone that just can't walk, someone that has had, you know, a knee operation but can still balance on a scooter, whether it's two-wheeled or three-wheeled, or a bicycle, that is the e-bike that's coming forward. I didn't want to deny our residents the chance to use these if they chose to do so. I think it's our job that if we go that and make that route and make it available, that we should make them as safe as possible, we should make the operators be as responsible as possible. And I think that does involve some sort of insurance, although I think 10 million is pretty high. But the indemnification, I think, should be included. This will, you know, take cars off the roads, this will help people get around and invigorate our downtown area. This isn't about making revenue. I'm not even thinking about the revenue side of it at this point. I, you know, the point isn't to, to make a lot of revenue, but maybe to cover some of our expenses in enforcing this. I know the chief's going to have a, an additional headache if this were to come to pass, you know, you're going to get calls, "I saw so-and-so on the sidewalk, and there was a young kid riding," and is it a DUI if he's driving drunk? Is it a hit-and-run if you graze a pedestrian and take off? And what role does the operator have? And go to that judge and get the search warrant to reveal the information as to who was renting the vehicle or the, the device at that time? I mean, I know that's, I know that's going to happen. That's going to be some additional headaches. I am concerned that AB 1112 is going to come down, and that's Assemblywoman Friedman's bill, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Okay. I would have hoped that coming from a local governmental agency, she would understand that we would like to adjudicate our own issues in the city, but I guess not. But anyway, that bill is coming down, and that might take a lot of this out of our hands in the first place. So I would like to see some sort of movement towards developing a pilot program. You know, we haven't even worked on the RFP. All these things that we talk about today can be included in the RFP, and see if the operators are interested in responding to that, to see if, if they'd like to do business in our city. I think that if we don't do anything, we're not going to be able to just keep these, these out of the city, that they are going to infiltrate. Someone from Atwater is going to, you know, ride in and leave it at North Brand or outside the Galleria. So I think we should do something. The question is, what do we do? How detailed do we want to get? How extensive does our safety program need to be? Our financial responsibility that we're placing on the operators, et cetera. So that's, that's where I'm at. Mr. Sinanya?
Since you so well iterated the points that I'd, I'd want to make, so I'm not going to repeat everything that you said. I'm basically in agreement with you. I don't think ignoring something that's there is a good approach. I mean, sticking our heads in the sand doesn't resolve the issue. I know, I think someone mentioned marijuana, and, you know, we, we're in a similar situation with that, except that you don't see the physical manifestation of it as much, but, you know, just because we've banned it in the City of Glendale, doesn't mean that people aren't using it, and it's not being sold and purchased here, that the mobile apps aren't being utilized on a massive scale. So I'm, I'm in agreement with you, and that's my reasoning as well. I don't see myself using a scooter anytime soon. I just don't see the circumstance, but I'm sure thousands of people will. I do have a couple of questions for staff. I, you know, the, the traffic collision, the sort of the safety comparison that was done, which I, I see how logically it's the, sort of the best, most objective comparison between traffic injuries related to car usage and scooter usage based on mileage, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Is there, is this broken down further as to how many fatalities there are?
We didn't include fatalities for that, just, there's only been five so far via scooters nationwide.
Nationwide.
Nationwide, there's been five. And again, maybe not quite an apples-to-apples comparison for that.
Right. And how much revenue sharing are we asking for?
We're looking for a dollar per device per day.
And is there like an industry standard on this, or no?
That was one of the early means in which many cities adopted. Some do it on a per-ride as well. I would add that we are not adding permitting fees as part of this, since it's a pilot program, and that was one of the reasons why we also pursued the higher revenue on a per-day basis. Because we're not, since we're a pilot program, we're not setting up an actual permitting process for this right now.
Yeah.
So therefore, we went for that higher number. If this became a permanent program, then there would be permitting fees, and maybe we would also consider a recalculation of that revenue sharing.
I see. Okay. And as far as the commentary about the injuries that the attorney had referenced, again, I mean, I mean, I'm looking at these sort of statistical objective numbers. I understand that law firm that specializes in these is going to see a lot of them, you know, or at least some of these, the 200 per thousand miles, but I, I just don't see any statistic indicating that the occurrence of such injuries is higher than it is in automobile usage or bicycle usage, nor am I seeing that somehow the, the type of the injuries that, that are occurring are in any way different from, or worse than the type of injuries that are occurring in automobile accidents. So, I mean, it's a pilot program, I'm for it. I, I think the, the 10 million that we're asking for insurance, Mr. Attorney, City Attorney, 10 million, that's sort of on the higher end?
It is.
Is that the second highest in the country, something like that?
I'm not sure where, where it is. Based on, based on the risk and issues.
Right, and I know these operators are asking for like 2 million or 3 million, that's probably on the very low end.
It's on the lower end, and that's something I'd recommend.
So, I mean, I'd be okay with the $7.5 million insurance coverage, but otherwise, whatever the mayor said, I'm, I'm with him.
Ms. Devine?
Well, you know, I'm, I was really excited about this concept when it was first brought up, and then I kind of went back and forth and back and forth, talking to people, talking to our residents and groups, and, you know, "What do you think about this?" et cetera, et cetera, listening to speakers that would come to council. So I, I find that I have to look at this on three aspects: safety, infrastructure, and enforcement. Those three. The fees, the insurance, the indemnity, we're already getting pushback on those, you know, we're asking too much, and, and, you know, we can't, you know, this isn't going to work. Those are not my major concerns. The safety of our, of our community is important to me. Insurance, well, insurance doesn't insure safety. Insurance kicks in after there's been a disaster, after there's been an accident. And so to, you know, to, to base a decision on, for me to base a decision on, you know, how much insurance the, the company is going to provide, doesn't really ring true to me. Infrastructure. We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have bike lanes, and I cannot see scooters riding through the, the streets. I was on Brand this weekend, and there was one scooter, and it was on the sidewalk. We don't have a bike lane on our major thoroughfares where these will probably be riding. So I, you know, I, I just can't see us until we have bike lanes or some sort of lanes where these can be used, because, believe me, and that leads me to the third point, enforcement. We are hardly able to enforce speeding, stop sign violations, iPhone, talking, you know, distracted, distracted driving. And I, I hardly think that scooter enforcement rules are going to be a top priority with our police department. They just don't have the time for this. And it, it, it worries me that, that there's not going to be enough enforcement on scooters. And the other thing I want to say about infrastructure is, as I looked at every one of these pictures in the report, there were bike lanes or some sort of a lane in every picture, and we don't have those. And I think that's the only way that we can keep, keep riders, keep them safe. So that's another. And I also want to mention an incident that I had a few months ago, and I was up in, I think it was Laconia, it doesn't matter where I was, and there were kids, and they had a scooter, and a couple of them were, were riding on the scooter, and I said to the couple of the other ones that were just sitting there, I said, "Aren't you going to ride that?" And they go, "No, it's too dangerous." I thought, "Wow. If these kids know that, if these kids aren't willing to get on this, then I don't know that I can say, 'Let's try this' in our city." So I guess for those reasons, I, I'm not in favor of going forward with an RFP. I think that, first of all, we should wait for these, these Assembly bills to come down. I, I appreciate... these, um, these assembly bills to come down. I, I appreciate Ca- I think it was Catherine, uh, for, for all the information that you provided, and you would certainly, it seems to me you would be a, a resource for us, uh, if this, if this goes any more forward. But, um, I think that's one thing, to put a pause on this until we see what the, what happens with these assembly bills. And number two, to, um, give us time up, yeah, to work on, for the city to work on infrastructure, so that we have, um, designated areas for, for people to ride on these scooters. I don't see anything wrong with, maybe the e-bikes would be a better option than just scooters. Um, you know, we now have cyclists, uh, riding our, in our streets, so I think drivers are getting a little more used to seeing them, and we, but we still don't see them on Brand or Central. And, uh, you know, that's where we're talking about, uh, the, the area where the scooters would be, I guess, riding. So, um, th- those are my suggestions right now, is to put this on pause. Uh, if not, look at e-bikes only, and, um, let's wait for, uh, the possibility of more infrastructure. Uh, we were talking, there is only one portion of, I think, is it Central that has a bike lane, and that's by, up in the north side by Phoenician. It's a very short distance. So then where do they go? Then they're dumped into the traffic, and that to me is, and I just, I mean, you could put on these scooters, you could put a list of safety regulations. You could put the, my husband, you could put the Magna Carta on there, and no one would read it. So I don't know how effective that's going to be. Uh, the helmets, it's good to hear that we could, if, if that's true, that we could, um, en- enforce a helmet rule or, or put that in place, that would be great. But I think just having one event where they give out helmets, and that's going to take care of the, the safety, I just don't think that's enough. So, um, those are my suggestions, the three, and, um, uh, that's where, that's where I am on this issue.
Thank you. I think it should be noted that, um, Glendale kids are a little tougher than Laconyada kids.
[laughing]
Having, having kids for both.
Hardly an argument.
Mr. Garbati.
Thank you so much. Humor is always good, right? Um, I agree with Ms. Devine. I agree with my colleague. Uh, I, I think there's so much lobbying behind this, this issue that within two years, 2017, that was introduced to, um, Santa Monica, the, the helmets went away, the docking stations went away, it became dockless. Uh, we haven't started anything yet. The fees are issues, the insurance is an issue, indemnification language is an issue. My thing is, we need to wait and see what is coming, what is 1112 going to do or say. I don't think that's gonna take our ability away to regulate anything, and, uh, it just says that, I believe what it says is, you cannot just not allow it. That's what, that's what the language is in, in 1112. That's the main, uh, body of that, that bill. But let me go over some of these issues that we talked about today, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but these are, this is my, my opinion. Uh, the, first of all, the $365,000, it's not gonna even be a dent in the cost that it's gonna cost the city to enforce it, to maintain it, or for our police force. I mean, when you do the cost of doing business in the city, it's gonna be a lot more than that. Uh, traffic congestion, I mean, the, the idea is to, that it's gonna reduce traffic congestion, but have you seen, uh, I mean, I've been to Santa Monica, and the scooters are riding in a traffic lane, and every car has to go around them. Has, and do they have that three feet minimum that you have to, the same laws, the bicycles, that you have to have three feet separation when you go around them? Is that, is that how it is?
Correct.
Okay. So have you seen them in traffic when there's tra- it's, it's rush hour, and everybody has to go around them? Uh, and it's a safety issue. Not having a helmet, I don't know how that was taken out of this whole, whole equation, because more cyclists for, for years tried to, because they used to ride without a helmet, and it was forced on them, but it didn't happen. The hours, 6:00, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, uh, riding it at night, nighttime, as it was mentioned, not seeing the road well, I don't know what kind of lighting they have, uh, trying to enforce the 18-year and older, uh, I've seen many pictures, I was doing some research while the speakers were talking, you see a lot of kids tandem, you know, older brother with a, with a kid in front of him on a scooter. As far as our transit hub to be at that last mile, uh, first mile, last mile of our transportation, I don't know what our ridership is right now with the, with the, with our train station, Laresarian Station. I think that's something we need to look into and consider when, when we wanna implement a program like this. Uh, and I wanna see Pasadena doesn't have it, and Burbank doesn't have it. I think when we wanna compare ourselves, we, we have to stop comparing ourselves to this very large cities, like San Jose, San Diego, uh, where was it? Denver, Portland, Sacramento. These are different types of cities than, than us. We always go out, all our way and com- compare ourselves to the cities that are not really like, like Glendale. I think Pasadena is, Burbank is, Santa Monica somewhat is. But I think we even wanna cons- consider ourselves to other cities or compare it, we need to, we need to, uh, look at the cities that are pretty much same type. But as far as the electric bikes, uh, Metro has a program, right, Mr. Najarian, that they provide? Because we had, where was it? It was one of those, uh, taste walk Glendale that Metro was there. They had the, the map of the city. They asked the residents, "Where do you want the, the, this electric bikes to be?" And we all marked the, the places that we wanted to see electric bikes that, or some sort of a ride-sharing. Uh, but we never heard back, and I don't know if it's a program that they still have, maybe we can implement. Uh, I don't know, I know that it wasn't very successful in Pasadena, but Glendale is not Pas- I mean, we are all different cities. But, uh, I think if you wanna have a, start a ride-sharing program, start with the bicycles, uh, that are electric, and see if you can, how does it work? Instead of this, the scooters are very dangerous. And I'm not trying to take the ride away from people who wanna ride scooters. If you, uh, search online, there are 10 different, I mean, hundreds of them, but there are five or eight of them that are very, uh, very popular, and they fold, they're foldable, they become like a briefcase. You can walk to the, you can ride it to the, uh, the bus station, get on the bus easily, because it just folds in 10 seconds. And then you can go to wherever you wanna go and write that to your work. And if they wanna ride it, people have that choice. They can do that. It's not that you're taking their, their, uh, ride away by not having this program at this time. I think we need to wait until this, uh, 1112 is coming, see what happens to it. Also, maybe wait until Pasadena and Burbank have this in, in place and see if it works or not, since Pasadena's bike program didn't work, the share, bike-share program didn't work. Um, I have all my notes all over the place. And, you know, trying to enforce the, the fines and asking the, the companies to, they're not police officers, they're not, uh, an enforcement, I mean, they're not a law enforcement officers to try to fine their, their customers for not obeying the law, and I don't know how, how that would work. But overall, I, I think we need to wait until, uh, the state laws are coming forward, and also to have neighboring cities implement this program, see how does it work, and go from there.
Mr. Agajian.
I, I can't be against a new concept. You know, these new concept, concepts eventually will come to our city. But we have to be very careful. We have been, City of Glendale been a very conservative city. So I like that. I want to see it that way. There are other cities, our neighboring cities are considering this, so I want to see where they end up with this issue, because this is very complicated, in my opinion, very dangerous issue. Uh, I mean, we can't compare bicycle with a scooter. And the reason being, the speed is very different. A bicycle maybe will go on a flat area, I don't know, 15 miles or 20 miles. With the scooters, you can go much faster. And I can't con- compare the scooter to an automobile, because inside an automobile, the person is fairly, uh, has some sort of protection. When you are on a scooter or bicycle or motorcycle, you have no protection. So this is a dangerous device or dangerous vehicle to ride on it. So I would like, like my colleagues has been mentioned here, I would like to see where we end up, uh, with this issue in Sacramento, when the Senate will look into this and what they will decide, or Assembly eventually when, how they will look at this issue. Uh, having big, uh, insurance, asking for a big amount of money-wise, 7.5 million or 10 or 15 million dollar insurance, I'm in favor of it, because the damage very easily can be even over $10 million. And I have this feeling that they come back and will sue City of Glendale. Uh, maybe, uh, our city attorney, fearless city, city attorney will enlighten us about this insurance business, if you can. Can I ask him now? What will happen? Somebody, you know, we know easily that somebody, when they lose some sort of body part or brain-wise, if they're becoming capacitated, uh, they come back and they will sue big, and probably 7.5 million or 10 million is not enough. Then what happens? Can they sue the City of Glendale?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Agajian. Um, well, first of all, as you know, we'll get sued regardless of whether or not we have liability. Uh, that's just the nature of the business that we're in these days. But, uh, in terms of actually having liability, it, it just depends on whether the, you know, our, our, the scope of our liability is dependent on whether there's a statutory basis to impose liability to us. The most common one would be, uh, what's called dangerous condition of property, of public property. And so would there be a condition that caused an accident that causes us to be sued? Um, and to the extent that we, um, uh, we'd have insurance if it exceeded that, then we, we, we'd have to look at other, other avenues of, of recovery, including the indemnity, including our own insurance. Um, it just depends. The reason, uh, that's one of the reasons why we did recommend the $10 million, because we, we wanted to be conservative, in your words, uh, to be most, most protective, um, acknowledging that it is on the high end of, of where jurisdictions are providing their insurance coverage, um, in, in a fa- either a fatal or, or traumatic, 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 brain injury case, actually, which are more costly than fatalities, frankly. Um, you are looking at a high potential of, of dollar value, and so we, we're, it's, it's a risk management exercise for us to determine what's the risk, what's, what's appropriate coverage, um, and also trying to be, uh, not, not be cost prohibitive, uh, for the operator. Um, so the answer is it depends. Um, and that's why we were trying to be conservative, uh, to use the, the phrase that you, you used.
Okay. Uh, as I said, I don't wanna kill the idea, but I don't wanna, uh, go along with this now. So maybe we can postpone this for a later time, after Burbank and, uh, Pasadena to decide what they are going to do with this, and what's their experience after we look at it. So, and however, if any time we go along and approve this, if we are going to approve it any time in the future, now or future, I would like to, uh, include the ideas of Ms. Lehrer, uh, to be considered. And one I, uh, issue that I'm still, uh, not clear about, that, um, in some cities, they say, "If you have bicycle lanes, so you can have scooters," I guess. This is the idea. If you have bicycle lanes, so you can have scooters also in there. But, uh, in our city, I, I didn't see a continuous bicycle lane, uh, anywhere in the City of Glendale. If we have bicycle lane, and then they disappear in other, uh, streets, they appear. Do we have continuous lane in, uh, City of Glendale to ride on a scooter or motorcycle, or do we have any situation that somebody can ride on a bicycle or?
Our bicycle plan calls for a connected network currently. We do not have a continuous all the way through the city right now, though.
Okay, thank you. So I think, uh, I would suggest we leave this issue for a future date, like six months or actually a year later, and then review what's going on around us, and what kind of issues will come up. So maybe we'll be, we will be more informed to make a, uh, reasonable decision. That's where I am now.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sinan.
Uh, so I wanna thank, uh, Brad Calvert and his staff for preparing this report. I found it to be very meaningful and, and well-prepared based on the information available. I saw that there was a lot of information that was gathered from those cities like Portland, um, and others that have implemented this program, so therefore they have data to provide. I never got the impression that somehow Glendale was being compared to Portland or San Diego. That was never, I mean, I don't see anything that suggests that. So I, I saw the information to be very objective and, and very helpful. I, I'm, you know, I'm very regretful, I, I feel this tendency with this council to just not pass anything now. It's like, everything that comes in front of us now, anything of, of any, you know, that takes some decision-making is being just passed on. Oh, well, well, it's visited six months later, a year later, or, I don't know, let, let Pasadena and other cities do their thing, and then, like, they're gonna decide for us later on, based on their experience. I think that's, that's not constructive. We're our own city. We can make our own decisions based on information that we have in front of us. But that's just my modest opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garbati. A couple of things I wanna add is, uh, in the report, Mr. Ca- uh, Mr. Calvert, uh, where it says there's 1,000 bikes and 250, uh, 1,000 scooters and 250 will be a bicycle, I didn't see that. So for, for the future, when this item comes back, uh, I think we need, I, I don't know, maybe I misread it, but I didn't see that option to have 250 bicycles.
It may not have been in the report, and that's, that's our mistake for not putting it there. We did have it in the regulations as part of that, the standards of regulations that would have governed it. That was an attachment to, I believe it was.
I think, uh, my goal is, I think the issue that, with, with, with Metro, if we can contact them and see what happened to the idea, because we think the community was very, very supportive of electric bicycles, and they all participated in, in that, uh, program, and mentioned where they wanna see bicycles and where they can ride them. Uh, I think we need to contact Metro and see if that is still available, and maybe that would be our, our pilot program with Metro, and, uh, that would be my, 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 my vote. And, uh, just because, uh, we're not comfortable with making a decision doesn't mean that we don't wanna, we wanna kick the countdown, it's just not, there's so many unknowns out there. But I respect my colleagues, my colleagues' opinion. And, uh,
One.
About 250 bicycles.
He's not, he's not done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay, that's okay. And, uh, one other thing I wanted to mention, all of these scooters, I think they're, they're evolving, and the, the safer you wanna make them, the larger they're gonna get, because if it's, you keep them compact with the high speed, it won't be safe. And I, I think the, it's gonna, it's gonna, the design is gonna change, and many things are gonna change, and they're gonna become a lot larger than what they are today in order to make it safer. And they become, they, they will become something be- between scooters and the, the motorcycle scooters, something in between the two, in order to make it very safe. But that's for the future to see, and, uh, that's where I am, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Agajian.
Thank you. The 250 bicycles is, has been mentioned under device quantity, so it's in the report. But one issue that bothers me is, I don't wanna be the pioneer in dangerous game. I mean, this is something that lots of people, they get injured badly. So, as I said, So, as I said, and I don't want to stop the process of advancing new ideas, I don't want to be, stop it. So I'm just trying to be on conservative side. So that's why I said, maybe we review this a year later, to make a compromise, and study and learn more. Thank you.
Well, I never thought that I would be the most progressive member of the City Council, because it looks like that's what I am, with Councilmember Sinanian. I am all in favor of giving our residents the option. I'm all in favor of increasing their mobility. I am never going to take a backseat to Pasadena. I am never going to take a backseat to Burbank. We are a better city than Pasadena, we are a better city than Burbank, we have better staff than Pasadena and Burbank. So it'll be a cold day when I'm going to sit back and say, let's see how Pasadena handles it, let's see how Burbank handles it. I will not accept that. And that's just the way I feel. I told staff, I'm not going to die on this hill, but I said I wasn't going to go down without firing a few shots. I think this is something that we need to do. We shouldn't be afraid of this technology. The accident rates are much less than automobiles. The information that we've had over the last months have been extremely inflammatory. They have been pictures of accidents that have happened all over the state, perhaps all over the country. And it looks like council bought into that, and has been afraid, has become concerned about this. But in any event, maybe we can bring this back in February, and look at it again, and make a decision at that time. Perhaps the, or perhaps even sooner, if the AB 1112 comes through, we may be required, we're going to wish, we're going to wish that we had some regulations in, when AB 1112 comes in, because they're going to usurp some of our authority on this. But that's fine, that's the way council wants to do it. So please let us know when AB 1112 is implemented, if at all. And if not, we'll wait and see what Pasadena does, and see what Burbank does, and West Covina Commerce maybe is going to do this too. So that's just the way I feel. So what would the appropriate motion be in direction, Mr.? I'm assuming that it's clear that there's...
Right, there was no...
Desire not to implement a RFP.
The item was to give us direction, since that's not going to be the direction, we can, we have the direction to monitor AB 1112 and the other legislation, and what the other cities are doing, and bring you back something.
Perhaps that should be the first milestone, is let us know what happens to AB 1112. And then, that may be a decision point, at that, at that time, what to do. Do we need to vote on that?
No, I just don't want to bring, you know, there's a tendency here to bring items back that get turned down. Just bring it back, and bring it... The motion is, my, this is my motion, to see what happened with the 1112, and also contact Metro and see what happened to the program they had. If that program is successful... I can tell you what Metro's doing. If that program is not successful, what are we talking about? I mean, being progressive and everything else.
But see, Metro was talking about bikes. The same issue that we are experiencing with these scooters, about driving in the roadways, about not driving on the sidewalks, about having helmets, we're experiencing with a bike share program with Metro. The difference is, Metro Bike Share Program is asking the city to kick in several hundred thousand dollars for the facilities itself. But I can get, it's a fair question, I can get a detailed...
Let's find out, that's what, that's what I'm trying to say.
Response, and make sure that we're up to date on what Metro's plans are for a bike share program.
You know, that's, that's, that's my motion, to watch 1112, contact Metro and see what happened to that program, and if we can implement that program. And wait a year, see what's, this is, this is an industry that it's, that it's evolving, and there's so many loose ends, that, you know, you can't, it's not really, anyways.
Well, you've given us a couple timelines. You're talking about AB 1112, which may come out in a month or so. Hold on a second. Then we're talking about another year, and we're talking about the Metro program, which may have an effect here, so.
Yeah, I won't support that motion, because that year, I don't understand where that year is coming from. 1112, and finding out Metro's doing, and then, you know, if it's time, it's time. I don't understand the whole year thing, something behind that year.
Because my, my, you can vote anywhere you want, I, you know, that's, that's how the democracy works, that's, that's fine. But just to say, we're progressive, and it's kind of not fair. We all have our own opinions.
I said that.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not telling you, I'm telling, because we all have our opinions about different issues. And that's how the democracy works, and whoever wants to vote for it, will vote for it, whoever doesn't, that's fine. And that's how we make decisions.
I was just offering an alternative motion.
Can I, can I make a motion to bring this back nine months later, and not to go through all this?
But, Mr. Agajian, let's say next month, and I don't know the timeline, if next month the state says that you're going to have to permit these electric scooters in your city, shouldn't we bring it back at that time? And not necessarily nine months?
If that's the case, we will bring it back.
So, so let's get the report, and it might fail, as a report, report to us, if it fails, if it's dead, then we'll know that. If we report back and say, hey, it's passed, we're waiting for a governor's signature, then we need to maybe gear up and anticipate it. So I think the best next step is just to hear, not to take any action today, on the RFP, on the pilot program, and get a report back from staff as soon as we get information on the success or failure of AB 1112.
That would be my motion.
Isn't that the best?
One other thing is, every, every, every Assembly Bill, or State Senate Bill that passes, you don't have 24 hours to implement everything. They give you a year or so to, to...
Not necessarily, yeah, but let's hear back.
Let's hear back, let's hear back.
Let's hear back from that. Is that the direction of council, then? Do we need a vote on that?
We'll need a, we'll need a motion on that.
I need a motion, yeah, just, motion to bring it back.
For a second, Ms. Devine. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Agajian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, and what's the next item?
Director of Community Development regarding Public Hearing on Design Review Board, DRB Case Number PDR 1900634, located at 275 West Lexington Drive, to install a proposed mural on one of the on-site buildings, a motion to approve the DRB application with conditions.
This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Thank you.
We'll go directly to Mr. Kiesel.
Mr. Kiesel, it's all yours.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The applicant of Next on Lex project is requesting approval for installation of a mural at their The project Next on Lex has a large four-building development that you all approved in 2014. It takes up most of the block, surrounded by Lexington Drive on the south, Orange Street to the east, Milford Drive to the north, and Central Avenue to the west. The building on which the mural is proposed is located in the southwest corner of the subject site, at the intersection of Lexington Drive and Central Avenue. And it is shown on this slide with red, and there's a red circle around it. That's where the proposed mural will be. The mural will be installed, whoops, sorry. Yeah, if you could change it, that'd be great. And I'll just tell you when, no. Sorry about that. There we go. Sorry about that. The mural will be installed on a portion of the northern facade of the building, and will be seen traveling south on Central Avenue. It will be approximately 780 square feet in area, and according to the applicant, the artist will use spray paint to install the mural on the building. So the hatched area on the slide is where the mural is proposed. A clear coat will be, will be applied after the painting to protect the mural. Next slide. Okay, this slide actually shows the proposed mural superimposed on the building. And then the next slide, please, shows a detail of the mural. The name of the mural artist is a person named Chuck Arnoldoli. I may, I may pronounce that a little bit off. He is actually a muralist from Venice. This will be a reproduction of his work. Next slide, thanks. Section 30.47.040 of the Glendale Municipal Code requires that murals are consistent with certain standards. And basically, due to First Amendment considerations, mural evaluation is really limited to, limited to the location of the, whether the location of the mural is appropriate, and whether the size at that location is appropriate. These standards, and how the mural, or how this particular mural meets these standards, are contained in your staff report, and include the following standards. The first one is, murals shall not contain any letters, numbers, or symbols that constitute any form of advertisement or commercial message. The second, murals shall not contain any obscenity. The third, murals shall not detract from the, from the architecture of the site or the surrounding area. And change slide, please, thanks. Murals shall not cause the removal of required landscaping. The sixth mural, or the fifth, murals must be durable and capable of being well-maintained. And then finally, murals shall be located on existing walls. Next slide. This is a slide of a photo of the building. The sort of midway, let me see if I can do it, midway down the building, there's a blank sort of vertical projection, that's where the mural will be located. And then, next slide. This is actually a photo of the building several months ago, from Central Avenue, that also just gives you some reference where the mural will be proposed. Staff presented the project to the Arts and Culture Commission last Thursday afternoon, and as an information item, the commission was supportive of this mural, the proposed mural. Next slide. Staff recommends that council approve the project with the conditions attached to your report. Those include that the approval granted is for the location shown on the submitted application. Changes to the location or size of the mural shall be reviewed and approved by staff. The second condition, no mural installed shall contain letters, numbers, or symbols that constitute advertising or commercial message. The third condition, no mural installed shall contain any obscenities. And then finally, the final condition, any mural installed shall be well-maintained and in good repair. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, just to recap, and let's, let's hopefully not get it on too long, but we have very narrow grounds to reject this mural. Is that correct?
Correct. Basically, location and size at that location.
All right. Do we have any cards? Okay, who would like to discuss?
The applicant is here, just for your reference.
Okay. Ms. Devine.
I have a question. You mentioned the artist from Venice. When you say it's a reproduction of his work, does that mean that there's, this is somewhere else, and then he's just reproducing it, I mean, putting, copying it to put on this building?
I think the applicant can probably better address it, but my understanding is, the muralist designed what you saw, and another artist will reproduce that on this building.
Is this the applicant, or is that the case? Can we ask him to...
Sure.
Okay, sir, please come forward and state your name, and you may answer the questions posed.
Greg Goldman with Century West Partners. I represent the developer of Next on Lex. The artist, Chuck Arnoldi, is a, has been a professional artist for 40 years. His son now operates a company called Wrapped LA, which reproduces some of his work for commercial purposes. So the reason we selected them is, he's also done several murals, wallpaper, and art pieces inside the building. So it just sort of complements the, the overall experience. If you were to go into the building, walk down a corridor, get off an elevator lobby, you'd also see some of the same art.
Okay, all right, thank you. And you chose this one because?
It was chosen collectively by, you know, some building management, some people from the development team, and also, it was suggested by the company, the Wrapped LA, that produces his work.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Agajian?
Yes, I have a few questions from staff.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Goldman.
What are, I asked this question today at the briefing, can you tell me where murals are allowed in the city, and where they're not? Which zones they allow it, and which zones they do not allow it?
Murals are allowed in commercial areas or industrial areas?
Commercial and industrial areas?
Correct.
And mixed-use areas as well?
Correct.
That's considered commercials?
Commercial.
And is there a regulation on the size? Because we have basically a code section for everything we do in the city. If you want to have a sign on the same building, the frontage, the frontage of the property will determine the size of your sign. But this one is like 77 feet tall, am I correct?
Correct.
So, is there a, is there a regulation that we have, or is there a code section?
There are not any size standards like our sign code. You do have the ability to look at whether the, the mural at the proposed location is appropriate, and then the size of the mural at the proposed location is appropriate. But there is no, there are no limits as to the, the size of murals that can be proposed.
Because one, item three, it says, mural shall not detract from the architecture of the site or surrounding areas. And this here, it doesn't, I'm sure the artist is a great artist, 40 years experience, but this doesn't tell me much as to if it's going to detract from the architecture, if it's not going to detract. So, my thing is, I think we need to look at our, our code section, when these projects are, you know, the proposal are submitted to the city, they have to, the developers need to put this part of their, 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 their supplemental packet. And so we know when this is done, there's a mural there, the size of it, what kind of mural it is. Because this is part of the architectural design that was approved, right? But now it's being, it's the second phase of the architectural design.
Correct. If I'm understanding correctly, basically, you would like, if, if an applicant is contemplating a mural, when they're contemplating a development, to let us know upfront, as opposed to, in this case, where five years ago, you all approved the project, and then currently, they want to install a mural, they're, so they're coming back.
Right.
Correct.
Because I'm sure they had a program to match this with the murals inside, and they had their, it's not sign program, mural program. So I think, I think we need to look into our, our code section and see if we can make it a little bit more clear as to what, what, what is it that we would want from the developers, and what is it that they can or cannot do. Because, again, if you want to have a sign on that building, you can maybe have a sign on one, one-fifth of what you have here, but yet you can, can have a 750 square foot mural. And I'm not really happy about it, to be honest with you. Not that the art is not a good art, again, this, this, this here doesn't tell me much, because I don't know what to make out of it, but I think we need to look into it. So I'll ask my colleagues if they, if there's a second to bring that item back later to look at that code section and see if there's something that we can do about it.
I mean, I don't know if the code section is going to help, but I'm, I'll go further. I'll just say that from the rendering and from what I've seen, according to my opinion, again, there's nothing standard or objective there that I can hang on to. This design detracts from the architecture of the building. I can't support it as it is. So I don't know if that helps, Mr. --
Yeah, but I appreciate that. And I think we, just to be fair to the applicants as well and to the owners of these properties that they have that program, we need to really clean up, I think, Mr. Culver here, he likes that cleanup idea. We need to clean up part of our code and make it a little bit more clear as to what can or cannot be done.
Let me ask the city attorney before we bring that back. Do we have discretion to further tighten our mural ordinance or are we bound by the First Amendment so much?
I think you probably have, as a legislative matter, you have some more discretion to set the standards, whether it's size and relationship to the building. I think that there's probably something you can draft, as long as those regulations are objective. And as you alluded to, Mr. Mayor, on this application, it's limited to the six findings that are in here. And my only word of caution would be, if you're looking at the application compared to these guidelines and we're talking about whether visually detracts, the record should have some indication of why, if that's the council's decision, why it's felt that it visually detracts from architecture other than, you know, personal observation about whether or not it's aesthetically pleasing or unpleasing to the eye. Because I think that that's something a little bit more is required under, under this provision and the First Amendment. That's, so that's my only word of caution on that particular issue.
So is there support to bring back the mural ordinance to review?
Yeah, maybe, maybe we can focus on the application and then talk about the, the ordinance.
Yeah, let's focus on the application. I, I believe, I don't know, when you say we have to be a little bit more clear as to, because it says, if you, if you think that it detracts from the architectural style of the property, I think it does. The colors, the style of the project, the architectural style of the project. I haven't seen the signage on this building yet, if there's going to be signage on it. I saw the one on the, on the side, one of the corner, there's a sign that says "Next", if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if it matches that or not. These are, I think, I'm not trying to judge the art, art by itself, because that's not my job. But, you know, I always say this, that my personal taste has no friend. So what I like or don't like doesn't, has nothing to do with anything. But I think proportionately, it has to be proportionate to the size of the building, the height of the building. This is the highest part of the building, which is the elevator shaft, which is 77 foot tall. And if you want to look at a mural or any architectural element that's part of that building, I think this, this isn't. So that's, that's my, my reason.
Okay.
The color combination with the, with the, the color of the building and everything else, and the style as well.
I mean, and let's be clear, Mr. Garcia, in these comments, you say we need to be specific. Does, does any criticism need to be specific? In other words, I would like to see blues instead of greens?
Not that specific, I think.
Or geometric shapes instead of free-form shapes?
And again, I think at that point, you're starting to dictate the content of the, of the art piece. But I think at the same time, if you think there's something in the application that's inconsistent and incompatible with the architecture, such as it's a modern building, but it looks like a, you know, for lack of a better term, a jungle theme of the, of the actual art, that's sort of, or the colors don't match the colors on the building, I think that's something, you direct us, we'll bring back findings for you in a couple of weeks. And that's the sort of findings that I'm talking about, rather than just conclusions.
So here, this, this is what it says, Mr. Mayor. It says, while the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
It says, "While the area of the mural is large, its installation should not detract from the architecture of the site." And I think it does.
And to the extent that we need to specify, I mean, I said this during the briefing, and I'll say it again, the architecture of the building does not talk to or does not jive with the jungle camouflage pattern of the artwork. Again, I'm not passing judgment on the art. I'm just saying, as applied on this building with its architecture, it detracts from it. I don't know, can I, I don't need to get any more detail, right?
No, I think that's probably sufficient, or sufficient as we're going to get.
Mr. Agajian.
Yes. I just want to make sure that the size of mural, can it cover the entire facade? So we have to come up with some regulation, in my opinion. For smaller signs, we have so many rules and regulation, and for this, there is no regulation, so I can't cover entire facade of a building. So we have to come up with regulations.
Okay. So that sort of speaks to the--
Future legislation.
The future. Ms. Devine.
I have a question that probably has nothing to do with this, this particular mural, but from what I recall of this build, this development, there were different colors on different portions of the construct, the buildings. Like one was like orange or, and I remember I wanted a certain blue color and nobody wanted the blue, so it was changed. But I don't see any of that in this, this development. And now, we're putting this, this green and black and, you know, mural. So I'm just wondering, what happened to the original color scheme of this development?
Each of the four buildings are composed of different color palette and material palette. So actually, it might be best if you could go back to the site plan that shows the four buildings earlier in the slide. Yeah. So Building A has a certain color mater, color slash material palette. Building B's is slightly different. Building C and D are all different. And the intent was, they're all different, but they all sort of coexist, complement each other.
Okay. And, okay, and these, are these incorporated in those colors, the mural? Are they kind of incorporated so that they would blend with the architecture, the?
I'm not sure why this necessary, this particular mural was chosen. You can ask the applicant.
Well, speaking for myself, I, I don't have a problem with the mural. I think if those of us that have problems with it should give a little more direction to the applicant because he's, I'm sure, spending time and money to get artists to design. And this shouldn't be a, you know, a hit or miss type of thing. So I would ask that those that are not happy with, those that are not happy--
I'm okay with this one.
Are you okay with that?
With this, I'm okay.
Ms. Devine? Okay, well, as a general comment, then, let me, let me say that we should be giving some direction if we were to reject this, so that it's not a hit and miss type of thing where they come back, we reject, we don't like it, they come back, we reject, we don't like it.
Again, the question, is this, is the architectural style of this building, if there is a style, modern or, what is the correlation between the mural and the architecture of this building?
I would say that the style of the buildings are modern, for the most part. They do incorporate some traditional elements and materials, but in more of a modern interpretation. So overall, you could assume that this mural itself would be compatible in that case because it is also modern.
Excuse me, can I add something?
Yes, Mr. Agajian, because I want to wrap this up. We got closed session and the meeting started.
What I want to raise the issue, I'm an engineer, worked with architects for years. They look at the things differently. So we get involved with this saying, "This doesn't make sense to me." I've worked with them and many times, I had that feeling while I was working with them. And they look at the things differently than an engineer or attorney or a doctor. Their view of the, these matters are very different. I mean, to get involved and tell an architect how to design or how the colors should be, I think we are going too far, in my opinion.
All right. Let me just add something here. Because that is what we are here for. It's, other than that, if you want to let just any development or any, any, let's talk about single-family homes. If that was the idea, why have historic districts? Why have design review process? Why have any other process? Why have appeals that comes here and make a decision? Our job is to, the compatibility is very important. Compatibility on the design with the entire, there are four large, this project is a very large project as it is. And you add this element to it, right in the middle of the, I don't know if this is an old picture or a new picture, but it has to blend with the, with the, with the project. It has to blend with the area. You want to build, if you have a little business, this is the problem that, you know, I was, I was mentioning. If you have a little business today, you want to put a sign on top of your window, storefront, you go through a very, very restrictive process because they tell you if you have 50 foot of frontage, you can have only a 50 square foot of sign. You can't have 51 square foot. So this is something, because it has to be proportionate to the building. It has to be, it has to blend with the building, it has to blend with the area. Otherwise, if they all wanted to do what they wanted to do, it's, why are we even looking at this? Let them just design whatever they design and I'll move forward. And I, I think it's our job to look at the issues. That's what it's here for.
I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't say not to look at the issues, but I'm saying getting too much involved with everything, I mean--
You're not getting too much involved with everything. This is in front of us and that's what we're looking at.
Okay. Is there a motion then at 2A?
To approve it?
To approve it.
Well, I'll do the opposite, or move it, move to not approve it.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion not to approve.
If the motion is to not approve, I would direct you to continue and direct us to prepare findings. That that be the motion, we'll bring it back.
How do we know if that passes or not?
Well, if it doesn't pass, if it doesn't pass, then we'll, we'll discuss.
So in the event that, you make a motion to deny it, and in the event it passes, direct staff to return with findings?
Right.
Okay.
That would be part of the motion.
This is to deny the, the mural as presented. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
You're going to deny it. You understand that? I just, because you are speaking, so, I'm not trying to change your vote. Let it stand then. Okay.
Okay. That's good.
Garpetian?
This is to deny, yes.
This is to deny.
Devine?
Yes.
You're adjourned?
No. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And I call the order of the meeting of the Glendale City Council, May 21st, 2019. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian?[1395.71]
Every year, stray Mylar balloons cause power disruptions that impact thousands of homes and businesses. In 2017 alone, Glendale experienced 26 power outages caused by balloons, making up 31% of total outages that year. Just one metallic balloon can cause a surge of electricity that short-circuits equipment and triggers an explosion, leading to power outages, fires, and possible injuries. And to make matters worse, the amount of damage to the lines and equipment caused by Mylars yield longer restoration times. Don't let metallic balloons ruin the party. Never release balloons outside. Keep them secure at all times and dispose of them properly. Your safety is in your power.
Opioid dependence can happen after just five days. Know the truth, spread the truth.
You know all the bad things you can get from smoking a cigarette. But did you know that smoking a joint can get you a DUI? And never mix a pint with that pot. DUI doesn't just mean booze.
So who's going to do what?
I'll pack the dead batteries.
Great.
I'll only put what I don't need into a duffel bag.
Perfect, that's totally unhelpful.
No problem.
Meanwhile, I will try to comfort everyone by speaking in a calm voice. And who is going to handle supplies?
I can forget to do a list for us.
Thanks, pal.
We couldn't be any less prepared. I'm proud of you guys.
Talk to your kids about who to call, where to meet, what to pack. Visit ready.gov/kids for tips and information.
The Housing Choice Voucher Program, also known as Section 8, is a federal government program to provide safe, secure, and affordable rental housing to qualified low-income families throughout the United States. The program is funded